We call the meeting to order four thirty. We have the regular meeting, that's February seventh. Danny and I were there.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
I'm abstaining.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Like they had one thing to the agenda, entertain a motion to add S H R energy option agreement under four A.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that. Discussion, all those in favor? Okay, next on the agenda is Morris Friends and Neighbors. There's been some interest by the Morris Friends and Neighbors to maybe consolidate some of their freezers and perhaps refrigerators from around the town to one location. I did mention a house next door, twelve North Street. It's no longer being used as an office for the construction company. And I thought it might be a good spot for them to, you know, get everything in one spot, make it a lot easier, I imagine. I don't know who would like to talk to.
Yeah, we we met and we came up with a list of just bullet points for us to look at. I want to thank Vinnie for the idea of this. Reaching out to him. He has to know that there was a wasn't thought about doing it. We, like you said, we have freezers in five locations right now, that when we have the food pantry, people have to go all around town gathering up the food and then bringing it to the church where we put it in coolers and then give it out to the people as they come. So it's it's really a pain in the heiney to do that. And having one central location would be amazing and so much easier for everybody. So like I said, we got together and came up with just some things we wanted to ask you about. You know, one thing we would like to see the house to see if it would work for us. And then would there be any cost to more expensive neighbors for, you know, taxes, utilities, upkeep, anything? And who would there be anything else in there besides us? And we, you know, we want to make sure that nobody's going to touch touch our things because we only have one freezer that locks. And so we don't want to invest in any freezers either. And then we're looking at the parking and access and it's kind of, it'd be kind of difficult for people to drive straight in. Or if we had a cut through from the parking lot through and then they could just cover, you know, come around and out.
Yeah, if they could come in by where the garages are on this side and then pull into the driveway, they could pull out on to sixty-one. Elaine White.
Yeah, so like, I mean, if we have a line, they could just go and then right through and back out onto sixty-one.
Yeah, it could cut through where the heavy barriers and lot to the.
Just make a little cut through there as well, what we thought of. I don't know, you guys.
I kind of always thought of that, just because we've been utilizing it a little bit more and be a lot easier to walk through and.
No, I don't want them backing out on some.
Right now, so. And then would we be covered under the town's insurance in that building? Who would take with the plowing and grass mowing? And it's already pest control. Cleaning, we would, you know, clean, sweep the floors and but, you know, I don't know if you have any other cleaning that people have to do or anything. But, you know, we would take care of our stuff and any messes that we made, which we don't make a mess. And then, right now, we would have one, two, three, four. Probably four or five freezers. Tables, chairs, coolers, and just cleaning supplies, our scale, miscellaneous pantry supplies. And then, one thing that we talked about was potentially having a contract because we don't want to be in there for six months and then everybody say, okay, you have to leave, you know. Say you're not here anymore in two years. Oh, new person comes in. Oh, no, we don't want the building. You have to leave. So we were thinking it would be nice if we were in there for a few years anyway, or have a guarantee of being in there for a few years. And then we didn't know if you were looking to combine pantries, get some state assistance. We, you know, we didn't know what you were looking for either. Because then we could service all the people that come here as well.
Are you got?
Well, we wouldn't be open. I don't know what your situation is now. Are you here every day? I mean, let people come in every day. I know you're here every day, but you let people come in every day.
All week.
Yeah, probably keep it the way it is.
These are just, we were throwing out all this stuff and I just jotted it down and.
Is there a possibility, because I know like Laurel works so hard from the town and you guys work so hard and there is some overlap. Like, is there a possibility to eliminate some of that overlap and work together? If you're gonna be like, I, well, you're, I know you have the pop-up pantries, which is great, but Laurel's here every day. I don't know. I don't know if there's any way to, you're gonna be right there and she's right here, if there's any way to kind of combine efforts.
Well, that's what we didn't know if you were interested in in doing something like that.
I just think it would be nice for the town and certainly for, you know, for you.
But we don't have.
You're not staffed.
Right, we're not staffed, but we also don't have the fresh food.
Right.
Every day either. We only get it once a month.
Yeah.
All we have is the frozen.
I wonder if there's a way to combine like the shelf-stable stuff and then, you know, you guys do the, I'm, I, you know, just suggesting, but you guys do the fresh and the frozen on the pop-up pantries and and Laurel kind of take over the shelf-stable. I know you guys do the backpacks too, which is great, so.
Oh, that's different.
Different than that.
That's, that's separate. That's another thing.
Yeah, yeah.
That I do with the pub and room in my garage.
It would be nice. I mean, I think this is a great idea, using that building.
It would probably be a thing for you too to move your stuff in there and take an area with shelving and what, instead of being working on the closets and stuff.
We have a plan for that house, right?
No, I, currently, we use the back or the north side of it for storage. Because we were, really don't have much storage here in the town hall, believe it or not. So we're just using the back part of it, the left side of it. You guys would probably have access for the front side of it. I think there is one couple of questions I have to ask with the building inspector and make sure we're okay. What's required?
Yeah.
Is it for this purpose?
Right.
Just make sure zoning's okay with it too, which it's a municipal building. I imagine it would be fine.
Yeah.
Like taxes or no taxes, upkeep and repairs, I believe would be the town. Only one access in it would be probably myself, maybe like the highway foreman, if he has to get in there. Or we have to let a furnace guy in there to do the furnace or the plumber.
Could we put cameras in there? Would that alleviate some of the A camera, you know, whatever?
Only problem with that is we don't have Wi-Fi over there.
Why not?
Doesn't quite reach.
Can we get a booster? It's like ten feet.
Let me try. I'll check on the insurance. I like the idea of a cut through for the access. Plow and grass mowing would be the town pest control. I've done some of that over there. We'll have to look in for a time period, what we think would be acceptable, you know, proper for, because we can't guarantee what's going to happen in two or three years, but I understand your reasoning because you want to leave one place and then that.
Right, so, you know. I know, we're hoping that if this did indeed happen, that we could be there for two or three years or whatever, because.
Yeah.
I don't see any difference really with this use than, like, you know, the Boy Scouts using the town, the basement of the firehouse for so long or the Legion or whatever. I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, me too.
One, one other question. Well. Why? Because I would think you could rent it or, you know.
Well, you can't rent it as a, like, for someone to live in.
Oh, you can't?
Talk to our attorney and talk to insurance company if they could find a policy for us for insurance. With a municipality with deep pockets, it's a target. And they really recommend it against.
Yeah.
And that, I think we're kind of better off with.
So I was thinking, I think we want to make money on it.
We did for, oh, eight months or so.
Yeah.
I could see somebody would get in there and these dollar signs.
The water isn't best over there, you know.
Well, it isn't anywhere here.
Right, but the bathrooms still work, all that.
Oh, good, good.
I'd rather see it used for the benefit of the community, but certainly is that.
We are getting more and more people. That was up to what, like seventy-five people? We're getting every month, so. We give away a lot, lot of food, hundreds of pounds of food.
We don't have much left at the end of the day. I was gonna say, as far as incorporating two together, if you have things that you think are going to be expiring like in two weeks and we're there on a Friday, if you let us know, we pick that up and then give that out so you don't have to end up throwing it away or, you know, so it's utilized.
Because we don't, I mean, one of the things when the church agreed to sponsor Morris Friends and Neighbors, they don't allow us to do the food pantry, because they said, no, the town has theirs. I said, no, we won't do any non-perishable stuff. We'll only do perishable because we didn't want any overlap there at all.
I mean, we brought things over to you that people give to us that we say, no, we can't, because we just be perishable.
Yeah, it's worked out pretty well, too.
Just noticed the matching shoes, Grandma. I like that.
We all know.
I think maybe by our next meeting could have some answers for you on some of this. The answers we don't have right now.
The other thing is depending how much you want to expand it. Rick over at the Bethlehem church there runs their food pantry, very knowledgeable gentleman on resources of who to reach out to. And depending on how far this goes, it opens us up to get some funding from the state as far as food.
Right.
So.
There's some, there's a lot of records you have to keep, Vinnie, and a lot more information. Right now, we only gather zip code, how many people in your family, seniors, children. And that's it, right? And then we record the number, the pounds of food that we give out. And we'd have to do a lot more than what we do currently. We don't, we don't have the staff to do that. And plus, there's a lot of reporting to the state in order to get that funding as well.
And we do, we give to people out of town too. We don't just.
Yeah, you'd have to, if you got funding from the state, you'd have to give it to more than just Morris people.
Maybe if you have, you know, a centralized location and it's visible, you'd get some more volunteers too, which would be nice for you who do a lot of work, so.
So it's the same houses that do everything as you guys all along, though.
All right. All right, yeah, well, I'll work on this. I'll talk to the insurance with our attorney and town highway foreman and see what we can come up with.
Awesome.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave so I can bring it back to your mother.
All right. Welcome. Thank you. For a S H R energy option agreement. Going back and forth all weekend and all day today with Noel Lafayette from S H R Energy. He's the one that got the RFP, utilized the site over at the transfer station for solar array. And we finally nailed this probably around eight o'clock this afternoon. It's acceptable to our town council. It's acceptable to Noel. Noel will be here tonight for the board of finance meeting for their review of this. Basically, the ancient points on this came down to went from twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars a month. By year, I'm sorry. I wish it was a month. And twenty-five years instead of twenty years. And this is not the end of it. He'd still have to, this is allows him to go out and bid to get the opportunity to put this solar array there. He would still have to come back and we'd still have to go through some review. Wetlands review, I think, is up, so he'd have to go through that again. This would go to the board of selectmen and to a town meeting as well. The lease would. This just allows him to move forward, hopefully win the bid and get the opportunity, put the array in.
Now, who does he have to win the bid from?
I believe it's through the state.
The siting council, I think, for solar.
This is under one meg or under the level for the siting council?
Okay. There is a typo, I think, three B exclusive, isn't it? It's period of twelve and then parentheses twenty-four months, so.
Okay. We noted. I'll get that clarified. But again, he will be here tonight if there's any further questions that you want to ask.
Looks good. So do you need a motion?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the LOI.
Option agreements.
Option agreements. Thank you.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
All right, so moved. Thank you. Hopefully, we if all goes well, we'd probably see the array going up this fall over there. Been a long time.
They don't have to go planning and zoning or did they already do that?
They already did that.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. Appointments, we have Melissa Healy for Beach and Rec from October fifteenth, twenty eighteen to October fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I make the motion to appoint Melissa.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Who's that?
Who just left? Oh, Kelly Harris Taylor.
I'm not sure, just says vacancy.
Okay.
I know Kelly just left.
Oh, Bagnacci.
Oh, did she not, we know? Bagnacci. We vote?
No.
All in favor? Budget, you have the copies of the draft that I put together. Do you want me to go through it on on the screen or go through this?
Yeah, I, I'll follow it.
All right. School budget at this point is up under eighty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Town budget is down a hundred and nineteen, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. For the all, overall increase is a hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. I see. I did drop the capital non-recurring down to four hundred thousand. At the goal this year, the capital non-recurring committees meeting, trying to finalize that list for this year. And it's also a ten to fifteen-year list as well. Where am I? Board of Finance, they didn't respond, so they're not getting anything. Except for the audit. Word of assessment appeals, we feel there may be some increase there, so it's up to five thousand for legal. They're gonna have a busy time in March, I believe. Fire department, a lot of these increases were driven by fuel. We saw, we did lock in heating oil beginning July one, two ninety-nine a gallon. Diesel will be locked in at three thirty-seven a gallon. There's been some increased usage because of the increase in volunteers over at the firehouse. I believe he also went up on some training. Gas. And there wasn't much else. Anything on fire department?
Nope.
Fire marshal, just increasing costs because his hourly rate for the inspections he does. Beach and Rec. There was a significant increase in turf maintenance. We hired a local company, Oak Hills, I believe. They came in and they did a great job last year. Got the lower soccer field back to really what it should be. They did a really nice job on the softball field as well. So this is like the first year of a full contract with them. And including the, doing the infield of the softball field, it's ten thousand dollars, so. I just. Crabgrass treatment mid-season, feeding with grubs, spraying broadleaf weeds, et cetera, lime. Core aeration and athletic field seed if needed. So this is a maximum what it would be. And the infield grooming for the softball field. And I think that was really about it for any increase with her. Library, I believe the only real increase would be salaries and wages. A little bit in supplies, a little bit in bibliomation. Otherwise. Anything for them?
What is the digital, I feel like I asked this last year, I'm sorry. What is the digital resources? Is that the subscriptions and stuff?
Yeah, it's all their online subscriptions that they provide.
As that goes up, books and magazines doesn't go down?
Uh, not in this one. It's budget. Books and magazines went up substantially last year. Anything else on library? I know I'm kind of throwing this all at you one time. PNC, some increase in wages and a few minor increases. A little bit in legal, a little less than town planner. Good. Tax collector, basically it was wages and I believe her computer support, which is her who does she use data?
Quality.
Quality data.
Quality data services.
QDS, they've gone up. Treasurer, bit of a decrease in the fiscal clerk. It's really about, I think it's based on twelve hours a week. So that's what we're, that's what we've been doing, so we budgeted it that way. He did have a slight increase in his computer application support, which is the financial system that the town of Morris is on. And payroll service fees. Morris Board of Health, which really is just the Visiting Nurses Association, we actually have seen an increase this year in requests for the VNA. So I didn't think it was too much to add the five hundred to it to make it a thousand dollars for the year. Inland Wetlands was happy with what they have last year and for the same this year.
Is Tony acting as our, or is our CEO acting as our wetlands agent?
Not yet. And there's been still some discussion on that and some training that would be required, which if he decides to move forward, he could really start taking that training.
Is our chairman acting as the?
The chairman and a member volunteers their time as the wetlands enforcement. ZB A. They felt comfortable where they are. There was some discussion about the training that's required by the state now for ZB A. I think it's four hours a year. And I think they're going to be able to access that training along with the zoning members. And it will not cost the ZB A anything. Town clerk, reduction in the assistant town clerk salary down to fifteen hours a week. Other than that, she stayed pretty close. Assessor, again, the wages and also computer expense, and she uses QDS and also vision appraisal for her support. Community hall cleaning did go up slightly. Fuel. I've been kind of tallying the move this over. The average use over the last four years for fuel and, you know, obviously this year was pretty mild. But we average about four and forty-five hundred gallons of propane and we've been paying about a nine, dollar ninety per gallon. And this also includes the place next door with a hundred and seventy gallons a year at three, two ninety-nine a gallon. That may go up a little bit, you know, if we move forward with the friends and neighbors in there. I keep the temperature about forty-eight degrees over there and I shut off half the house, so. It's almost as warm as here. Doing everything we can to save money.
Yeah.
Community hall maintenance, everything's gone up. The contract for the elevator service alone went up two hundred dollars this year. I think it's forty-three hundred bucks for the contract, for that contract. So it's just it's the way of the world these days, apparently. Salaries went up along with the contract. One that's noticeable that's gone up also is the file server maintenance. We just had a meeting with Connecticut Military and they came in to the cyber assessment on Connor Morris. And they made some recommendations and some of these recommendations that would be impact this on a yearly basis are incorporated into this budget. There's others that would be one-time costs, which would come up in the capital non-recurring budget, about sixty-five hundred dollars. They feel if we incorporate the changes that they recommended, we'd be in pretty good shape cyber security-wise. So we're working towards that goal. And hope to have it accomplished this summer with all the changes they recommended. Basically, if we want to go even further and have really nothing here on site as far as server, we'd have to add probably another I'd say eight thousand and it would get QDS to host our information on their servers and we get vision government solutions to host our information on their servers. That way, the liability's on them. If they get hacked, it's their problem. They're not gonna no one will hold us, you know, hostage for the information. Well, that was a large increase. And maintenance of town property. We are finding it's, if you can get someone to shovel your woks and sand on a commercial basis, you're kind of lucky now. I did reach out this fall to several local companies that do that type of work and they're like, no, I can't get the help. I can't do a commercial business like that. So it's pretty interesting that you can't find help.
We haven't done it.
We, right now, we have Sunview. We agreed to keep going, keep doing, and he held his price, but the cost of everything else has gone up. Town council. Slight increase there. Labor attorney. Well, we shouldn't really have to utilize a labor attorney. We do keep money in there in case some grievances do arise. They need to be dealt with. If there's going to be any mediation or anything like that, I'd want to be prepared. Health insurance. Actually, even though health insurance went up seven point five percent overall in premium, we did reduce it by one, couple positions. One is no longer eligible for health insurance and at least one more did not take the
Opted out.
Opted out. So we saw a reduction there. We are in that with Region Six and a few other entities. Slight increase in eldritch water testing. I know that's a lot all thrown at you there, but any concerns or? Board of Health, pretty much kept the same. I know Greenwood's they can always obviously use more money to help with their goal as well as the rest of them. I think Greenwood's did. they can always obviously use more money to help with their goal as lo- as well as the rest of them, I think Greenwood's did ask for six thousand.
Arba money from us, didn't they?
They got some Arba plus that, uh, monies, the slight bit of monies that are coming back to the town of Morris from the opioid, uh, settlements, uh. We'll have a discussion about that for, in the future, but we're looking at perhaps having the cog send them to the council governments and let them pool the money and maybe make a great, greater benefit to the community that way instead of our hundred and fifty-nine dollars or whatever we got for the first check, it's really not much. Highway, saw some increases here, uh, wages. Uh, obviously due to contract went up. Prices of everything is up. Heating oil. Electricity, one thing about electricity right now, uh, through December where seven point seven eight cents per COA. Looking at locking in about ten point seven cents, uh, which isn't too bad for a commercial rate. So we're, that went out to bid and we're gonna be looking at that. Uh, let's see. Road maintenance, you know, the price of oil has driven everything up asphalt. Name it. Uh, felt the twenty thousand dollars for highway, highway gas and diesel was more in line with their, uh, four-year average. Uh, repairs and maintenance up. Just the price of supplies. Tire and loop, same, uh, snowbowl, snowplow blades. That is the cost of one set of blades, which they figure about every year, they're gonna replace one set, so that should cover them. Sand, that went up at least twenty bucks a ton this past year, fortunately now we can buy in bulk with the, uh, salt shed and hopefully buy at the right price when prices are low. Uh, chip seal again, the price of oil and the stone material has risen, uh, in order to get these roads done. I'm sure that's something, uh, Board of Finance will be looking at. Crack seal, I'm surprised that he did stay the same on that, that has risen though, probably gonna be doing less. And the thing down at stormwater testing. Uh, we were contracting with another engineering company, Cardinal Engineering, uh, we had WMC, uh, was doing it in the past. Got ahold of Cardinal Engineering, they've, uh, they feel they can get it done for twelve hundred dollars per location plus six hundred bucks for the testing, so eighteen hundred bucks for the transfer station, eighteen hundred bucks for the highway garage. We were able to reduce that cost of the. Losip, uh, Rick is gonna take Losip outside the budget, kind of like Tar. Cause it really didn't make sense to, it's a reimbursement.
It confuses everybody every year.
So hopefully that confusion will be gone. Uh, we saw about a three percent increase in, uh, insurance for the, uh, liability auto property and workman's comp. We are locked in with Karma for three years. I don't think anything changed on that. Civil Division is just the, uh, social security, Medicare. Goes in line with the wages. The one in yellow here, Litchfield County Dispatch, I think they're supposed to have an executive committee meeting on the twenty-third, we'll get a firm number on what their price will be this year. And the EMT outside service is the left, uh, agreement with LVA and Phantom Fire plus the staffing. Uh, so it's, uh, three forty-four, two oh nine. And that was it there, any questions on that? Dog warden, uh, this is one of the agreements we got in the contract this year was to, the ability to outsource the, uh, dog or animal control officer. Uh, I've been speaking with Harwin Ten First Select and Mike Chris, uh, they have a facility, they currently contracted Litchfield to cover Litchfield for their animal control. We're getting a, uh, interlocal agreement drafted. Hopefully we can, we can also move forward with Harwin Ten, it would be thirteen thousand six hundred dollars for next year, uh, I do keep twelve hundred dollars in there for the licensing. Which we incur some expense on. But, uh, it would be twenty-four, seven coverage and I think much needed, obviously.
Yes, when you say next year, start July first?
Well, I'd like to get us going prior to July first.
Yeah.
Yeah, as soon as possible, cause our wayward dog was picked up in Watertown, uh, over the weekend.
Somebody can give him a good home.
That was suggested. And, uh, he was, owner came and got him, uh, this morning, but there were some fines involved as well, so.
So Harwin Ten is all on board with this then, so it was just a matter of.
Well, Mike Chris is bringing the agreement to his Board of Selectmen tonight.
Oh, no, but I'm saying everything, if they agree to it, we can move forward with this once we have a contractor.
Yeah, if they agree to it and Board of Selectmen agree to it, we both towns have to go a town meeting for it.
Okay, yeah, alright.
It's a good solution.
I think it is, it's regional, it's the way to go.
It would
Yeah.
Allow us to have somebody on call at least.
I don't think there's any changes with the building inspector. Slight increase someplace. Transfer station. Wages obviously changed and one thing about the transfer station too, I know it's a big question, uh, we're looking at May first. Who have Sunday hours again, it may be nine to twelve, we're gonna utilize the part-time people to do that. I think they'll, uh, make a lot of people feel better and it's understandable, they're used to it.
Well, especially with the summer, people coming in, late people and.
Yeah, they don't want to leave their house with garbage, I know, you know, for the next week. But hopefully that'll be a solution for them. One question we still kind of have are the tipping fees. We should be good, but the state is considering some legislation that would increase tipping fees like three dollars a ton. Uh, I don't know why they're doing it, or I guess it's just trying to generate revenue for themselves, I'm not sure, but, uh, we'll see where that goes. Uh, hazardous waste day. Price pretty much troubled, doubled, what, what'd we have? Fifteen, no, a hundred and fifteen dollars for twenty cars, so a hundred and fifteen dollars per car to go to the hazardous waste day. And as, oh.
That's crazy.
And this is the vendor that won the bid. You know, through the cog. I brought it up at the last cog meeting, I said, you know, that's, that's crazy, if, you know, what are, you know, if they brought a pint of gas, is that a hundred and fifteen bucks?
A hundred and fifty bucks per car.
Per car.
So that's how they, so when you come to the Morris and get your ticket. You turn that ticket in and they charge for that vehicle a hundred and fifteen.
Well, they charge a price, but it averaged for us out to be a hundred and fifteen dollars per car. So I'm saying, why not have our own hazardous waste day ahead of time? Gather everything, cause people are probably bringing stuff they don't have to bring to the hazardous waste day, they're probably bringing paint, which we take.
Right, yeah, a couple cans of paint.
So we would gather everything and bring it up there in one or two vehicles, you know, through the town.
Or just, yeah.
And to save it.
And can we do that with, with volunteers to help the
Let's volunteer.
Station people out. Because that would be another burden for them.
Yeah.
To try to do their normal day work.
Yep.
And.
I think we could do it here one day, I mean.
Just gotta be careful with the handling and the transportation of some of this stuff, but it's basic stuff.
Right.
But if you set an area over there just for, for that day.
Yeah.
And, and we can do volunteers.
I think we're also gonna get the word out more about what our recycling center actually takes.
Yes.
And what it doesn't take and what really the only things you need to bring to the hazardous waste day.
Didn't Torington last year have a hazardous waste day and it was free?
Uh, well, they do it, it's free to the, uh, people, you know, but to.
But they advertise people out of town.
Did they?
Yeah, why would they do that?
I don't know, cause we use the, uh, Torington Water Pollution Facility for the hazardous waste.
For the hazard, right?
Yeah. So I think, uh, with a little more outreach and, uh, some coordination, I think we can reduce that bill.
Another thing, uh, and once Dave gets settled in there, and if we go ahead with that, uh, food waste. Then we should have a town meeting for just recycling. To exactly what you said, explain to people what we take in here and how we can cut our tipping fees.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of people that don't realize what we take here.
Yeah.
They just think it's automatic garbage and so we can educate the public on that. It would say, it was a little money, I'm not saying.
Food waste is forty percent of the tonnage that we haul out, so that's significant. Yeah, and yeah, I think the education would be.
But you just have to get people educated because there's compost buckets that you can purchase and there's a they know better how to, how to get this point across, that's what they do.
Yeah.
So if we could bring them in, have a town meeting, explain to everybody what's going on.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
Education. Uh, and again, I already explained the stormwater testing, which we were able to reduce. Senior Center. She had too much. Yeah, it just went up slightly, I believe, with wages. Maybe, uh, maintenance and utilities. Yeah, cleaning service is up a little bit. But that was it. Uh, like I said, the capital communities meeting, uh, hope to get a list finalized for our next meeting and get our approval, Suckman's approval on that presented to the Board of Finance. Uh, they'll have enough to work on and, you know, for a couple meetings before they get there, so.
Looks good.
So I'm gonna bring this to the Board of Finance tonight.
As I stand with this right now, do you know what tax increase? Decreased?
Well, cause their grand list went up thirty-one percent. And this budget was up a hundred and sixty-three thousand six hundred. It's really hard to say because last year they added a lot of fund balance that dropped the mill rate down, they got down below twenty-four, it's a twenty-three nine nine.
Nine nine and this year's projected is nineteen seventy-five.
That's without adding anything from the fund balance. So I, I have a feeling they're gonna do that.
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna have to come up with a solution because with our grand list going up.
Yeah, but our mill rate has dropped four points.
Our mill rate should drop.
It did, over four points.
Yeah.
It's pretty significant.
Yeah.
So maybe they won't need to use the fund balance.
Out of our hands. Anything else on the budget?
No, that looks.
Speaking of money, tax collectors report. Uh, she feels pretty confident that still hit her mark, it's not gonna be like last year where you get over a hundred percent, she has cleaned up a lot of the, uh, back, uh, monies that were owed. So you're gonna see a reduction in the back taxes, in the back interest, uh, this year compared to last year. But she's still gonna go after it, there's a couple of practices that have fallen a long ways behind, she's dealing with. And the Board of Finance is gonna have to realize that. Yeah, it's gonna get tight. It's gonna be, yeah, definitely, yeah, I liked the last few years.
Right.
Which was very surprising. Like I said, grand list is the thirty-one point oh nine percent. That's about all I had, I did have, I mentioned energy earlier and, uh, we go out to bid, uh, on our energy costs. And I'm gonna have Rick review this contract with Constellation, where we are with now. They're the ones that are, uh, coming up that what did I say, ten point seven cents? Yes. So this is out to bid through different energy suppliers, uh, would, would be a motion to go ahead with this. By the Board of Selectmen to lock it in. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Uh, any discussion? So we should be good for three years on that. Uh, public comment? Do people here, yes, Bill? Oh, she's under contract, I don't think it's, is it under there? Oh yeah, it's a line item.
I thought it was seven thousand.
Yeah, they reduced it. I think they reduced it by a thousand. Yes.
Seven thousand, yeah. Just, uh, you know, with, with the vote next week, the referendum, just wondering about, you know, the sign out here, we're gonna, we'll get a nice notice out there that hopefully word like a little stronger, that's like really important to come out and vote on this cannabis ordinance, I mean, I think it's hurt to be in there somehow, I mean.
If you'd like, I'd, I'm happy to put one out, but if you'd like to put it out.
Right.
I had like cannabis vote, uh, March first, six AM to eight PM.
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's, you know, it's hard work to work, to let people pay attention to it.
Definitely, yeah. And I think, uh, I think it's gotten out there pretty well in the paper, I'll make sure I get the CBG again, uh, so they're aware. Is it on the front page at all, on the website?
I have it on there.
Okay, we'll make sure it's up there too as well.
Uh, on that solar thing, the solar ray at the transfer station, is that at the transfer station or like the hairy white field?
The, yeah, the old ski slope field there, yeah.
Is that one piece now? Is that one D, was it?
It never got separated.
Oh, okay.
We looked into that, uh, it's an entire acreage, it's about fifty-six acres.
Right, right.
That one parcel, the old farm.
Remembered, I heard about it, I found, remember where I saw the beach erected, we, you know, had to sign for the hairy white, I thought it could only be used for recreation or something in the deed when it was donated to the town or something.
No, and I checked back through all the town meetings and all the Board of Selectmen meetings, uh, over the years and it was never designated as such. It just got utilized that way. It was an opportunity, I guess, to throw in a ski, ski slope back when we had snow.
Oh, the rope toe, yeah.
Yeah, the rope toe. Uh, and we do hope in a few years to possibly utilize the top of the landfill, uh, once it's done. They require, I think, a fifteen-year period of time for it to settle. Uh, once that time is up, it'd be nice to get another set of panels up top there too, so. Anything we can do, generate some funds? Anything else?
I, I guess my next question, you know, go through this, you know, whole cannabis thing and you know, starting back, you know, when that lobbyist came to town and you know, I, I guess the feeling I had is, you know, we all got tended to thinking something was gonna happen that you know, that never materialized by the law, I mean, like, why didn't we know? Like that there was never anybody coming back to the town, like in January, I went on the website. Looked at the, the RS website and where the fees were coming to three percent, like thirty seconds, I had the answer, I mean. I don't know how, like, how did this go on for six, eight months for everyone to believe in pound, we're getting a million dollars or two million dollars, is it negligence or incompetence, I, I, I don't know what it is, I just, I, I can't understand it, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? It is five ten, five nineteen, is there a motion to
Return.
Outside, all those in favor? Don't move, thank you.